Hi, good evening. We'll call the City of New Orleans only Board of Appeals for a Tuesday, December twelfth, seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll call Dave Martin, present, Dottie Travers.
Present.
Bob Phoenix.
Present.
Mark, uh, Greg Schlaub. Absent, not on. Mark Benjamin, Chairman, present. We do have a call. All four members will proceed into tonight. Communications. Do not have communications. Jackie has reminded me to let everybody know about the requirements for training if you haven't taken the training yet. Uh, we'll follow that up under old, old business or at the end of the meeting. This is something we gotta talk about. Um, acceptance of the October tenth, one twenty-three meeting minutes. Everybody should receive, and they came in a late email. Did I, I make a motion to accept the meeting?
Yeah, Bob Phoenix, say second.
Uh, motion paid and seconded. Any errors, omissions, or corrections?
None, none, I found.
Hearing, none. All those in favor who accept as presented, Dave? Yes, Bob?
Bob Phoenix, aye.
Dottie?
Yes.
Mark Benjamin, aye. Me, minutes have been accepted as presented. Old business? None, correct. None. Uh, new business, um, just for the, for the record, uh, it's been asked that we handle the first two. We hear them, open them, close them, and take action on them for the two members present. So we'll, if I can get a motion to, to vary, vary the rules, just the action on each, uh, application as we go.
Motion to change the agenda.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Dottie, aye.
Bob Phoenix, aye.
Mark Benjamin. Good air, Miss Motion Carries. We will vary the agenda. Take action on each appeal as they come forward. Um. For the two applicants that we have today. You need four votes. Pass. You only have four members. You have the option to continue to his next meeting if you don't wanna take, you can, you can win four to one and pass from five. But if you get three to one, you don't win by the majority. So it's, sometimes it's in the applicant's best interest to continue until we have a full, full slate of seated members, but it's your choice. Yeah. Um, you guys in a good mood tonight?
Could I have, uh, five minutes to contact the?
Are you oh nine or ten?
Oh nine, uh, absolutely.
Bill Sweeney, just.
Run it by him.
Yep. So they brought that up. It's a smaller screen and it's much more difficult to be going around up here at the top with that thing popping down on me. Uh, yeah, we'll go forward. Application B twenty-three oh nine, one oh two, one ten, Main Street, request for relief from zoning regulation. Excuse me. Six point five point five to permit total square footage of residential use on the second, third, and fourth floors to exceed the square footage of the commercial use on the first floor, property of C P H two LLC. Application C P H two LLC assessors map one oh two, block two, lots fifty-seven. Chelsea, right, Tuesday? So, so. I can get your name and address for the record and what you'd like to do and why you need a variance to do it.
My name is James Filipina. I'm from Tobin Carberry in New London, so forty-three Broad Street. Um, I'm, keep or seeking a variance so that we can renovate the fourth floor of the building. Um, as you just stated, uh, six point five point five requires that the residential use shall not exceed the square footage of commercial use. Uh, the property was built in the eighteen thirties and located within the Chelsea District. Uh, the building is a contributie, contributing structure in the downtown area of the city, but was damaged by a fire in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and is currently vacant. We're seeking the variance in order to renovate the fourth floor and add residential use. As you can see on exhibit one, which Rich has on the screen for us, the res- uh, renovation plan calls for the raising of the roof along the back of the house, if Rich can find that important. It was the same, it was a rendering of the front and the back. But it should be exhibit one in the packet I provided you. There we go. So the top image is what we currently have and the bottom image is what we would like to do. Uh, please note that, you know, elevating this roof along the back will not increase the overall square footage of the fourth floor or impact in his historic integrity of the front of the building. Currently, the property has been approved and used as a mixed-use building since the nineteen eighties. Uh, exhibit two in the packet I provided you is the nineteen eighty-six variance. Uh, that was approved and permitted the conversion of the second and third floors for residential use. And additionally, in the packet I provided is exhibit three, which is the certificate of occupancy. We have reason to believe that the fourth floor has been used for residential use in the past. Uh, first, in the packet I provided you is exhibit four, which is a letter from the Norwich Fire Department. Um, the letter was from nineteen eighty-six and discusses use of the fourth floor as a dwelling and discusses the windows on the fourth floor. Uh, there was previously a skylight. But in February of two thousand, building permit number eight forty-six was issued, which permitted the installation of a dormer on the front of the building and the removal of the skylight. So yes, this is, um, picture taken by attorney Sweeney and the rendering that we saw a moment ago shows the dormers on the front of the historic building. There we go on the fourth floor. As the board is likely aware, a building permit should not issue unless there is a corresponding sign-off from the zoning officer. Arguably, this is an implicit approval of residential use on the fourth floor. Additionally, as I mentioned, attorney Bill Sweeney took photos of the residence of the building recently and provides further evidence that the fourth floor was used for residential use. Uh, we have an old plumbing fixture. As you can see there, um, I believe also in the packet I provided you is exhibit five, uh, which is a different angle of the plumbing fixture. Exhibit six. Yep, if so, on the other side of that wall, the front of that shower fixture, um, we have reason to believe that that predates that, um, variance from nineteen eighty-six. And, you know, generally provides some evidence that this floor was used for residential use prior to the variance. Um, given the age of the building and the evidence we've provided, we believe that residential use predates modern zoning in the city. And therefore, a variance is not required. Alternatively, however, if a variance is required, we believe there is a legal basis for hardship. If six point five point five was applied to the property, any use of the fourth floor would be restricted to commercial use or none at all. There is no reasonable commercial use that could be located on the fourth floor of this building. Given the overall economic landscape of the region and the city, finding a commercial tenant for the fourth floor would be exceptionally difficult, if not impossible. Rather, this community is in desperate need of residential space. And this floor is particularly suited for that use.
Yeah, and you said?
I don't know why her name is there. This is my name.
As the board is aware, this regulation has posed problems in the past with redevelopment, particularly of historic buildings and downtown buildings. Further, the board has provided similar relief in the past, including across the street from the Quay Building. Lastly, the variance we're seeking is not, is a, is a dimensional variance and therefore the re- uh, additional considerations and seven point one zero point two do not apply. Um, therefore, literal enforcement of six point five point five would cause a, cause unusual hardship to my client because they seek to renovate and use the fourth floor. They would be required to renovate the floor for commercial use only. As I indicated, that would be exceptionally difficult to find a commercial tenant, if not impossible. A variance of the regulations application to the property coincide with the city and regions' need for residential space and revitalization of downtown areas and therefore should be granted. Thank you.
Dave, any questions?
Thank you.
Bob?
Um, I really don't have anything of, on this, um. I'm just I just have to, well, the only question I have is the necessity to continue to renovate the entire building up through the fourth floor. Is there a reason why the fourth floor must be included in the renovation?
Uh, my client seeks to go through and renovate the building. There was a fire in two thousand twenty-two. So currently, there is going to be some renovations needed on the second and third floor due to damage and while we're going through that process and trying to get the most commercial use out of the building, it makes sense to try to renovate the fourth floor at the same time. And as I stated, you know, this area is in particular need of housing. So my client believes it's best, both commercially for their own interest, but also for the community, this housing definitely would be used. Um, so that, that's the basis for our application and as I stated before, uh, trying to use the fourth floor for commercial reasons would be particularly difficult. Um, I can't speak for other attorneys, but I don't, I don't know of any that are trying to find a fourth floor office at this time in downtown Norwich, so.
I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Dottie?
Yeah, um, I'm going to the renovation on the fourth floor. Um, what do they anticipate, being we need housing? How many apartments do they feel that they could put in there on the fourth floor?
Yeah, so it would coincide with the second and third floor. Uh, second and third floor each have two apartments. The fourth floor as well would have two apartments.
Oh, okay. That's all I have.
Rich, could you go back to the photos in the back, the projection? So at present, you've got two and a half stories from from the Church Street side, right? Because the, the attic, you know, the third, the fourth floor.
Yep.
Would technically be an attic.
Yes.
And what you wanna do is raise the roof, make the profile on the back higher.
Yeah, just along the back, yep.
So the front would, the front would remain the same. But you wanna take a half a story and turn it to a full story to create two more apartment.
Just to accommodate. So the square footage is there on the fourth floor. It's just this raising of the roof along the back so that the roof doesn't join at the floor of the fourth floor. Um, we have some photos of that, but this instead is to accommodate a balcony, a fire escape and some additional light with those windows, um, fire escape, you know, particularly in light of fire, you know? This is a good safety feature to have. But, so that's where we are, yes, raising it along the back, but as we noted, that wouldn't be an overall increase in the square footage.
But. So just to have the required access to the, to that, um, to the fourth floor, you would need to be um, external access, right? You would need to do something along those lines?
On the interior or the exterior of the building?
On the ex, because right now you have the fire access on the exterior, correct? Is that, that's what that shows?
Yeah, so the top image is what is currently there, um, the fourth floor. The, the entire building right now is currently vacant.
Yep.
Um, after the fire. If we did renovate, were able to put apartments on the fourth floor, yes, having this fire escape extend up there is something that should be in place.
I mean, I guess my, I'm asking, is that a code requirement that you have external fire escape access?
To the best of my knowledge, but I, I will need to confirm that.
So there's internal stairs, yeah, in that property, you know, that come off the front. And that is the main entrance on the backside of the Church Street side.
Okay.
That's you would have to have those stairs to get up there. They enter it from Church Street side, go down a large flight of stairs, go across the back line, and then go up another flight of stairs, and then get back to a porch. It's very inaccessible. The, it's uh, it's an inconvenience spot for for accessibility. So you do have to have two entrances when you get over two family, you know, right, in and out. That's, so that staircase isn't as much a fire code as it is would be the main entrance. I mean, it would be required.
Okay.
But that is, is that, it's not really being designed as a fire escape. Bob, any more questions?
Uh, nothing for me, thank you.
Dottie?
No, nothing. I'm all set.
Anything else you'd like to add? Uh, no, I believe. Um, I'm gonna ask for testimony in paper and opposed. So if somebody else adds something, we'll give you an opportunity to, um, should we put any questions before we close? Uh, is there anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposite? Okay, okay. I just don't wanna leave somebody out. All right, um, is there any, hearing none? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I believe so, so, okay.
Um, any, fully closing, any questions from anybody? Hearing none, if I could get a motion to close and move into?
Bob Phoenix, motion to close.
I'll second it, Dottie.
All those in favor to close? Bob?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
All right, um, going right into decisions. B twenty-three oh nine, one oh two, one ten, Main Street, request for relief zoning section six point five point five to permit total square footage of residential use on the second, third, and fourth floors to exceed the square footage of the commercial use on the first floor, property of E P H two LLC, application C P H two LLC, assessors map one oh two, block two, lots fifty-seven, Chelsea, it's all of these though. All right. Can I get a motion?
Bob Phoenix, motion to approve.
I second.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob, your motion.
Thank you, um. We approve, uh, motions to vary from the zoning rules based on hardship, which in this case I'm a little hesitant to, um, completely understand, but I do uh, see the need uh, for approving this variance. Uh, with the Reed and Hughes buildings, we, we granted a variance based similarly on the premise that uh, the residential space needed to be, uh, superior to the commercial space. So I'm basing my approval on that previous decision of the board. Um. In a backhanded way, I can see that uh, the hardship for not approving, I beg your pardon, for not developing the fourth floor on the part of the developer would, um, create more of a problem and, uh, really jeopardize the prob- project. So uh, I'm gonna go ahead and speak in favor of this, of this, um, motion.
Dottie?
Okay, seeing we do need housing, um. It pro, it would be probably more viable to, um, extend the roof line at the top for additional, um, apartments. If this isn't done, you have another problem in the town being that the um, building itself will end up be, get more deterioration internally and externally. And it, it won't be a good tax, um, taxes for the town. So therefore, it'd be more viable to fix it up correctly, and you do have the housing for the community. So that's my thoughts.
Dave? Um. I, I guess the hardship is the fourth floor is, is not viable, um, commercial use. Um, and so if you don't grant this, um, variance effectively, there's no use for that, um, fourth floor. And so that's, I mean, that's the what, what preventing use in that, in that case. Uh. Been the evidence that it's been used in the past um for residential use. Um. So I'll be speaking in favor. I know the problems in access to that building firsthand. The day of fire. Um, I have a problem with creating more apartments like that. Hmm. Residential use. I believe that this was four apartments. And the attic was probably illegally converted, and I'm gonna keep referring it to as an attic because that is roof space that was converted into, um, residential use at some point. I, 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 I do believe following attorney Sweeney's photos that it was probably done. I don't have as big of an issue of having the fourth floor being residential. I have a problem with thinking creating two more apartment um, that require additional external staircases, that this house has already experienced a pretty tragic fire. Um, it's a long hose length, it's a long, difficult access, and put it on the flight external. There's not a staircase there that's safe to get to those staircases that need to be built. So I, I really mixed on this because I believe it was there. I believe it probably is permitted because of it's been there for so long, but I don't think it's the right thing to do. Um.
Mark, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Um. I, I'm as you know, my, my background and history, um, about fire safety, I'm making my decision based on an assumption, and maybe I'm wrong, and I would like you to correct me. But, um, as I understand, the life safety code will require this building to be sprinklered, is that correct? Or will it not?
I don't think it would have to be. I, and I'm, I'm only I'm a fire investigator, not a code compliance officer.
I understand.
I didn't take the second half. So I believe that a conversion, I don't believe it would have to be, it wasn't sprinklered in the beginning. I don't think the code would require them, and Rich, you probably deal with the Fire Marshal's Office a lot more than I do.
Yeah, and this one I know four stories in a traditional residential. You would need to put sprinklers. Three stories is the cut-off. Right, but I don't know on this. I don't have an answer.
Okay, it was my understanding that three units or more required a sprinkler system, but, um, just to let you know, that was, that was why I was basing my, um, uh, my, my positive decision on that. If that is, that is not the case, if the powers that be do not um, see the abilities of fire safety code as I do, um, you know, I, I would also have apprehension, as you do, Mark.
I, I believe that they would have to, the fire alarm system would have to be brought up. But I do not, I don't think it would require sprinklers. And if there's a que, if that's a question, we could certainly um, continue for a decision to get an answer from the Fire Marshal's Office.
Uh, I would like to propose that, that be a question.
So without speaking out.
Yep.
Turn. Um, so they're here seeking the, the variance for the use. So if they get that variance for the use, then they have to go to the commission for approval because they're adding residential units to this building, um, which is over what I can approve administratively. Okay. So, so there is another approval step after this with the commission.
So the city plan has to?
Correct, because it would be six total.
But that is the, the Fire Marshal.
Right, so the Fire, the Fire Marshal would review that application.
Dottie, you have something?
Yeah, I, I was going, I was really going to say to table it and wait for the report from the Fire Marshal till next month or whenever it comes in. But under the circumstances being we have to, we could prove the variance. We could prove the variance and then let it go and let the Fire Marshal determine whether it needs a sprinkler system. Or just keep the uh. Other two floors and eliminate the uh, fourth floor for apartments, I. I don't know, that would be the only other alternative would to be to table it, but if you think it's not the case, then. We ought to let it go till a Fire Marshal makes a determination on his end, what should be done with that fourth floor.
Well, it it's not the Fire Marshal that would make a decision, it would be the Commission on City Plan. Um. And I mean, it. From there. It would go to. Building for approval and it would probably get a Fire Marshal referral. But it doesn't. To Bob's point, if he's expecting a sprinkler system in it. Um. It may or may not happen. You know, if that was what he was looking to see happen.
So you could either have a sprinkler system or you can have a central fire. System.
No, some require most, at at a minimum, there would be a a central fire alarm system.
Yeah.
You know, hardwired system.
Hardwired, I know, I had one before and a hard one.
But. You could go above and beyond if you're required to have a sprinkler, but I don't expect this to require one.
Okay.
Um, I I hesitate to ask, but would it be a requirement? Of the zoning approval?
I think we're overstepping our.
Hey, yeah, I don't believe we can make a zoning approval. Uh, contingent upon something, the jurisdiction of the building department and Fire Marshal.
Right.
Other than if there's a. A a condition of compliance that, you know, that's obvious, but we couldn't. Make them do something that would not normally be required.
As much as I agree with and I appreciate the thought, I could not support that.
Okay. All right.
Um. So I guess. I I mean. It's gonna be built safely, the the question is, is does the board feel it's appropriate? To, I I suppose, continue. The residential. The pre-existing residential on the fourth floor and really formalize it and make it. Two more apartments. It it's my opinion that these were the upper two apartments. Expanded into that and then became three or four bedroom apartments. And now what the applicant's proposal is to get two more complete rents out of it. By raising the roof and making it a a full living space. So I don't know if I'm out of line. To deny this. When I'm basically supporting the residential use, just not in the direction that they want to go with it. And to me.
Well, Dottie, isn't it, can it go to the planning department, let them make a decision, if they feel that. They shouldn't get the two other additional apartments, then go back to the. Other plan. I. The only thing I can see is the planning department.
Unfortunately, it falls on us.
Well, the variance won't either have a go.
To approve the variance.
So. As I'm rereading the application, the applicant is asking. To permit residential use on the fourth floors. It's not specified. Later. He's been claiming what it is. But maybe Dottie's right. You know. We're giving them the residential use and it's up to the Commission on City Plan to decide if it's. Six units. Versus four. I I can totally disagree with the philosophy of this. But I don't know that I, I don't know that I'd be right to vote no for it. Did I clear it all up as somewhat for everyone?
Well, it does, it goes back to the original um. Language of the variance, which is really to. Uh, allow the increase of residential. Um, over the commercial s- space, I mean, that was, that was the basic. Um. Re- request from the applicant. Was to allow um. More residential square footage. And there was commercial on the first floor. So um. Now, I will apologize somewhat for for bringing my personal. Uh. Fear of life safety into this, uh, it was a fourth floor apart, fourth floor apartment, two units. Um. I doubt that it will be fireproof construction, uh. Uh, it's just has me sweating bullets, so based on the original application. A variance to permit the square footage of the residential use on the second, third, and fourth floor to exceed. A commercial, um. The space, the commercial space on the first floor. Uh. I would like to go back to that and have that. Application, part of the application, uh, considered.
Okay. And the hardship for the record for your, for your. Your motion, Bob?
Uh, to be honest with you, I I don't have one.
Well, that makes it more difficult.
It does, but um. You know. As I said, there's not a mandatory use of the fourth floor. Um. You know, the construction will will segregate the first floor. I'm sorry, the fourth floor from the remaining two floors. Uh, and have it as idle un- unconditioned space. So. The only hardship that I could imagine. Would be the one that we cannot approve, which is economic.
Dottie?
Well, the hardship here is um. Is basically, you could use. You can't use, of course, the economic aspect, but you could all use the um. Housing aspect, but you know, housing for the, for the community. Um, that there is not enough, there's, that's always in the news. And it's out there. And uh. But that that would be the only thing that I could come up with is, plus it. It it has, has to be repaired anyway from prior burning, the house itself is not in a. Good condition, so. It ha- it has to come through a repair. Of repair what you have, I. It's kind of. To me, it's the housing, I, that's what I would say, but. You have to look out for the community. So.
Hardship is that it's not, it's not viable commercial. Um. Fourth floor is not viable commercial, um.
Yeah.
Um.
It's just for sale though.
So that would. You know, grant this, that would prevent the use of it. For. Basically prevent the use of it, um, it's, it's. It's um. Clearly been used in the past. Um, so there's, there's a historic. Um, use of it, whether it was a separate apartment or. Um. Just making the the lower floors larger, I mean, it it's historically been used, so. Um, on that basis, I'll, I'm still on going forward. And the, and the, the city plan, the plan can. Um. Determine whether it should be separate apartments or, or, or just um. Allow the applicant to make the. The, the lower floor, um, apartments larger. Or or however they end up containing. Bob, are you okay with adding Dave's consideration of a variance to your motion?
Yes.
Dottie, you were the second, you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
After we give the.
Can we repeat the motion?
I did think.
It's changed a lot.
Yes. Go ahead, Bob, she needs the motion. All as one.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. Uh, motion to approve, uh, I'm sorry, um. We did that, um. Yeah. Um. Motion to approve based on, um. The original application. Excuse me, I'm just going through the note real close, uh. Motion to approve the application based on the, um. Hardship of. A requirement to improve the fourth floor. Um. Which will increase the square footage of the residential. Greater than the commercial use. Is that a little less unclear?
It's kind of ambiguous. I don't know.
The hardship being. It was. Previously used as residential to maintain the fourth floor residentially.
Dave's, Dave's addendum, yes, correct.
Well.
So proved on the original application and based on the hardship that it was previously used as a residential space.
Um, and then it's not viable commercial space, thank you. That was the lucky part. Bob, anything else?
Nope.
Dottie?
No, I guess I'm all set.
Dave? And just for the record, I'm just gonna state, I will be supporting this. Totally against it, I do not believe that it. For the record, I do not believe there should become six, I I support. The fourth floor being used for residential, but I do not feel there should be six. Apartments in that building. And I want that on the record to go towards the Commission on the City Plan.
And I would like to piggyback on that.
All those in favor to grant, Bob?
Bob Phoenix, hi.
Dottie?
Yes.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark Benj, hi. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Application V twenty-two, ten forty-one Boswell Ave, request variance, so. Following zoning regulation five point one point three point two. To reduce required parking from eight spaces to seven required loading space. From one to zero zoning regulation six point four point six landscape design sections. One point six. One dash six zoning regulation six point four point eight point two. To allow for the use of the existing vehicular access. Zoning regulation six point four point one special bulk requirements reduce the density. From five thousand square feet per unit to twenty-three fifty-two. To allow for five residential units to reduce the minimal usable. Recreation area from four hundred square feet per unit to zero. Property of T forty-one Boswell LLC, application of Matthew Green Esquire. Assessors map ninety-three, block seven, lots eighty-five, multifamily zone. All right, name and address for the record. Attorney Matt Green, behind the State Street in London, Connecticut. I am representing T forty-one Boswell Ave LLC. Mister Ernest Tolia, Tolia is on fear, I believe, as well, he is the representative of T forty-one Boswell. At LLC. Uh, T forty-one purchases property in April of twenty twenty-one. Historic use of this property has been an eleven unit boarding house. It's desire to convert this into a five unit apartment house. Each unit would consist of two bedrooms. The existing exterior, exterior of the structure would not be expanded. Property has ninety-five point five feet of frontage on Boswell and the rear of the property is accessed off of Reddell Street. There's an existing paved compacted driveway which serves this access to this property and two others. The paved compacted area extends beyond the driveway onto the subject property. Is about thirty feet plus from the rear property line to a rock wall where the property elevation drops considerably. The width of the property at the rock wall is approximately seventy feet. There's existing rock weight from the paved compacted area to the building. For access to the rear of the building. Uh, proposing seven, nine by twenty designated parking spaces along the rock wall towards the rear of the property, leaving approximately another ten feet to. Back up into the driveway area. The right away to these parking spaces by virtue of deeds which date back over a hundred years. Um, this application for a variance is a bit unique, the use. Is uh, the property is in a multifamily zone, and so the use, whether it was a roomy house or for a five family. Is an allowable use. However, the other requirements that go along uh, to make it in conformity with the regulations, uh. Um. Do not, uh, are are not consistent. And however, the proposed use that we're, we're putting forward would decrease the uh, nonconformities. Even though we're decreasing the nonconformities, we still need to apply for a variance. So the variances we are requesting is section five point one. Point three point two to allow for seven total parking spaces, a variance of one parking space. Uh, each. The uh, two bedroom unit requires one and a half parking spaces for total seven and a half parking spaces, again, we're providing seven. The use as an eleven unit boarding house required eight point two five spaces. Um, which is um. Point seven five spaces more than what uh. We are proposing. So therefore, there's a decrease in the nonconformity by that point seven five spaces. We're also requesting a variance of required loading spaces from one to zero, which is the current nonconformity is staying the same. Section six point four one allowing a maximum density, uh, allows for a maximum density of one unit per five thousand square foot of lot area. This lot consists of eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one square feet. And under that calculation, we only allow for two units. Five units. Would reduce the density from five thousand to two thousand three fifty-two. Should be therefore requesting a variance of two thousand six hundred and forty-eight square feet per unit. The current density is one thousand sixty-nine feet per unit, which is a variance of three thousand nine thirty-one square foot per unit. Therefore, we're we're reducing the nonconformity by fifteen hundred and seventy-nine square feet. Uh, the recreation space, the current uh, nonconformity would remain, it's not expanded, it would remain exactly where it is. Section six point four point six, the landscaping requirements. Um, six point four point six one of requires a parking strip of fifteen, a buffer strip of fifteen feet for a parking area. The uh, point two says it can be reduced, but not less than five feet. Uh, we are not, um. There would be no buffer. Or a minimal buffer, probably about a foot or something, so again, we're asking for a variance of. Section point one and point two. Uh, again, nothing would change, it would be what is uh, the existing nonconformity that is there now. Um, section point, uh, six point four point six point four. Uh, for each one foot of landscape buffer or requires an additional one foot. Landscape buffer for each foot in excess of the twenty-five foot height of the building. Uh, again, uh, there's no change in that nonconformity. And um, point six requires a fence wall, trees, hedges used to screen the parking area, and again. Um, it is the same nonconformity, we are not increasing it, we are just basically. Uh, asking for variance of the existing nonconformity. Section six point four point eight point two requires a driveway to be twenty foot wide with two and a half inch patuminous over eight inches of gr- processed gravel. The, uh, access and parking area are in existence and have been, uh. Uh, the accessway has been in existence for over years, about a hundred years by deed as I made reference before. Everything that is there, it also accesses a couple other properties, uh, there's no change in this non-conformity. Um. Which, uh, this non-conformity existed prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations. The hardship. Is the locate, the location of this building and the landscaping on the lot, the location. Dimensions and configuration of the lot and the topography. These conditions are unique to this property and predate the adoption of the zoning regulations. As you all know, Connecticut general statute, section eight point six states in part that the ZBA has the power and duty. To determine and vary the application of regulations in harmony with a general purpose and intent. With due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare and property values. Solely with respect to the parcel of land we're owing to conditions, uh, specifically affecting such parcel. But not affecting generally the district in which it is situated, a literal enforcement of the regulations would result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. So that substantial justice will be done and the public safety and welfare secured. The location and use of this property is five residential apartments rather than a boarding house conforms with the knowledge plan of conservation and development. Reducing the non-conformities, especially eliminating a boarding house is more consistent with the plan and more. Beneficial to the neighborhood as a whole and is in harmony with Connecticut general's. Statute, section eight point six. I'm happy to answer any questions. You can discuss with a lot of numbers. Sorry. The, the interesting part, excuse me, as I said earlier, the interesting part about this is when you, when you look at what you, we want to do here. We want to take a. Non, a, 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 a conforming use, we. Whether it's a boarding house or whether it's, it's a, uh, five, five family. And. The use is allowed, but the other requirements to go along with that. Need a variance, so instead, so originally we thought we could just go and get the site plan because it's a lesser non-conforming. Use, but it's technically not, uh, the use. That is the non-conforming, it is the other aspects of it. So while we believe that the town is in favor of having this or the city is in favor of having this as five residential units. As opposed to a boarding house. The. Non-conformities to go along with it change a little bit because of, of, you know, as I stated, because of, uh. Uh, now it's a five family versus what is there. And so we have to go through all of those and. I technically get a variance of them. Which. Um. Is, is fine, and then if that's true, then I still have to go get a site plan, uh, approval.
Yes, can I just clarify? So I, I had referred attorney green to the planning department, um, and then it was basically kicked back. To us down here for a variance because we were told, well, you won't comply, you need this, this, this. So that's just to.
Alright, Dave? Um. When was the last time this was used as a boarding house? Uh. I, I don't know, my client purchased it in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and it was prior to that, so I mean, as you saw by the condition of the building. Uh, it may have been used by a boarding house by a lot of illegal, probably, uh, animals and, uh. People, but, uh, in the last use and historically, if you look at the assessor's field card, it makes reference to. Uh, number of units in this building. So technically, I believe that we could continue. Uh, and, and you still have to get a license.
Yep.
But we, we, we could continue this with, uh, as a, uh, a boarding house. Not long enough ago. In our February.
Okay, alright. To, uh, to Dave's question. Uh, last time it was used as a boarding house was two thousand eighteen where it received a condemnation by the building official. Uh, condemnation which was appealed and upheld by the, uh, uh, building code board of appeals. Uh, with myself as present.
More, more recently than I ever would have.
Yeah.
Okay. So. I got the parking. That I got, understand that one. But basically, we're not asking for anything that's different than is right there now, we just wanna take this building. And make it into a, a, a five unit. And technically, based on what was. The use before. The quote-unquote non-conformities. Most of them stay the same, but a couple of them decreased considerably to be less non-conforming. Dottie?
Well, I, um. I feel that, um. This variance should be given, uh, it's more of a positive. To improve. The, uh. The facility. From, uh, the boarding house. To five units with two bedrooms in each unit. I mean, to me, that's more positive than keeping it the way it was before with eleven. What is it, one bedrooms if it was, or boarding, whatever? And that, that would help. The area. And improve, prove the area. So there should be no reason why, you know, we can't give this variance for now. And then it'll go to the planning commission anyway, for the site plan.
This was.
Yeah, this one. Still built, after here it goes to the commission.
I thought it was because it was five families.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's because it's anything over three, actually, for, for a residential. Multi-family council.
Bob?
Yeah, no, I believe this actually should be approved, um. They're not asking for more than. Really what, what is needed, um, the, the parking at one and a half spots per unit. Um. Right, you know, everybody's got two cars now, but what are you gonna do about that, it's just. Um. It, it shouldn't hold up the redevelopment of a piece of property here.
Um. You don't have. I'm good with. Ninety-nine percent of this, the only thing that I kind of have a little hangup. And just for the record, you don't have any space you could give for recreational? Well, what, what's interesting about the recreational, if you, if you wanna use the calculations. There is more than four hundred and fifty square feet per unit of grass area. Okay. But it's not, but it, but it's not fenced off, so I, I mean, it, there is, and I, I did the calculations. Um. If you figure the, the, the lot is eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-five square feet, the building itself is seventeen forty-six, the parking area is about. Twenty-one hundred, so you're looking at maybe thirty-nine hundred square feet. So that leaves about, just under eight thousand square feet. Uh, which is, uh, fif- fifteen hundred square feet per unit of grass area. Okay, so, so there, there is area, now as I said before, in the back with the driveway, it drops down. But that lower part of where the building is, there, there, it's all grass area, I mean, it's all grown bushes right now, it's gonna be cut back. So, so there is. An area for the five families. Who are the five people living to have a picnic event, have a gazebo out there or whatever the case may be. But if you look at what is quote-unquote recreation area, the, the way I read it, and I could be wrong. Um, that you have to have, uh. You know, whether it be a basketball court or a bocce court or whatever, I, I, I don't think there's room to put that, but there is certainly room to. Have a yard. It, it, that's kind of why I'm asking, just for that explanation, because a lot of times when you see going to zero, it looks like a kind, you know. You're envisioning a concrete jungle, there's no place. Two bedrooms, you're expecting kids. In this thing, you wanna have something, you do have a beautiful park in front of you. As well, but I just kind of, we wanted you to say that on the record, that there is some space.
Yeah.
Um. But the rest of it, you're, you're right, we're, we're. We're taking a less desirable use, making it. Maintaining the non-conforming, conformity, but it is more desirable to have. A five family than a eleven boarding house. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add before I take additional testimony?
No, I think I'll quit while I'm ahead, so it sounds like I'm ahead at least.
Uh. Does, is there anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone, anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? I'll just. Dave, anything else the applicant? Nope, you are, you asked the only question I had. Okay, the only thing that I will say is that I did. You know, I, I don't know if you fell asleep by the time I was talking when I was saying this part, but I did give what I felt to be the hardship. Um, if you want me to repeat that again, I'm happy to, to do that. Cause I know that you certainly have to state what the hardship is and, uh. Summarize it would be awesome. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I can give this to you if you want. Right on the bottom of it, where it says the hardship, the location of the building? Yes, so the location of the building, landscaping on the lot, the location, dimensions, configuration, lot, topography. Okay. Yep. Bob? Any, anything else for the applicant?
No, I'm good.
Dottie?
No, I'm all set.
Alright. Hearing done, you're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close, Bob Phoenix.
I second it, Dottie.
All those in favor to close?
Bob Phoenix, aye.
Dottie, aye.
Dave, aye. Mark Benjamin, aye. Alright, motion to close. You have to close, we'll go right into the decision. V twenty-three ten forty-one Boswell Ave, request variance for zoning regulation five point one and three point two to reduce the required. Parking from eight spaces to seven, required loading space from one to zero. Zoning regulation six point four point six landscape design. Sections one point six zoning regulation six point four point eight point two to allow for the use of existing vehicular access. Zoning regulation six point four point one special bulk requirements reduce the density. From five thousand square feet per unit to twenty-three fifty-two to allow for five residential units. Reduce the minimal usable recreation for four hundred square feet per unit. Zero, property of T forty-one Boswell LLC, application of Matthew Green Esquire, assesses map. Ninety-three block seven lots eighty-five, multi-family zone. Alright. Um. The only question I would have is. Can you guys think we need to take these variances separately? Personally, I don't, I think it's pretty much all inclusive. But if somebody wanted to entertain them one at a time. We could go, I'd rather not, thank you.
I would, no, we put them all together.
Alright, can I get a motion?
Bob Phoenix's motion to approve based on the clearly defined hardships that the, uh, applicant has stated.
Dottie, I second it.
Dave? Um. Yeah, I, I'm, uh, in agreement, uh, the co- location of the building, uh, landscaping on the. Lot, dimension and configuration of the lot, topography. Um, condition, you know, this, this is the, this condition predate the zoning, um. Um. And so it is. While this isn't changing, this, this. Well, physical. Aspects of this. Building and the lot and everything aren't changing. By making this change, it's actually. Less non-conforming to the rules. Um. And so I'm, I'm for this. But did I speak that right? I feel, goodbye, I tried, Bob?
That was fine.
Anything to add?
Nope.
Dottie?
No, it's okay.
Alright, um. I also will be supporting this, multitude of reasons, I will take a five-bedroom. Five apartments any day over eleven, real important house. I'm very familiar with this property. Everything's gonna be huge improvement. Um, Bob, to your direction about a fire alarm system, there is one of this, it's hardwired.
Oh, it's fine with.
It goes off every time with the spring with, when the. Residents were taking showers. This. Improvement. Uh. Good luck in. You could have had zero to make these improvements, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you referenced that, uh, there will be some residential area. Good luck with it, it's, it's a, it's an eyesore, that'll be a nice improvement in the, in the downtown. And we look forward to having it. So I'll be voting in support of this variance, we'll put this project forward. All those in favor to grant, Bob?
Bob Phoenix, aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Dave, aye. Mark Benjamin, aye.
Thank you all. Have a great evening. Rich, thank you.
What's the status of the other two?
Okay, so I do not see, I see Mister Turb-. Turbo Dalla here. Twice, so he is actually the owner of the property. Given with forty-one Boswell Avenue, so right, there's no one. Here associated with. Uh, V twenty-three. Or V twenty-three twelve.
You said one of them didn't have their cards.
Uh, uh, twenty-three twelve, uh, the four ninety Boswell Avenue. Um, he was supposed to have those mailed out a little later than, I believe it was the second, and. He sent me the images of his mailing receipts that we dated before, and they said, well, this can't be heard this week.
Okay.
And, um. Mister contest, I am not sure. Why he's not here receiving.
For. Just for the record, I'm gonna read it and I'm gonna call for somebody. And then I'll entertain a motion, if we don't have anybody to present, or we could take action, seeing them. So I'm just gonna. We have a, it's on the, it's on our agenda, so. So. I'm gonna move to V twenty-three eleven. A Garfield Ave, request for re- relief from zoning regulation section one point one. Residential bulk requirements reduce the front yard setback from thirty feet to eleven feet. And the side yard setback from fifteen feet to five feet from the construction of stairs to the second floor. On the north side of the home property. Mister Pontius, applications, Pontius assessors map, one eighteen block three lot seventy-five. R twenty zone. Um. The applicant. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this appeal? Hearing none. We have an application in front of us. We don't have anybody to give testimony. I'm gonna ask the board what their preference is to take action.
Uh, Bob Phoenix, I move we, um. Table, as a table or, 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 uh, or, um. Suspend.
I would say continue.
Continue.
Yeah, cause you opened it. You opened it.
I've opened it now.
It's open, so then it would be continued to the next regular meeting.
Right, and if, I mean, now that I've opened it. If he doesn't show. We can take action, but I, I, I don't wanna just. I don't wanna, I don't wanna open it. And hear it without the applicant here, at least. Emergencies do come up.
I agree.
And then, so in practice, if you do that, then the next time. We. Make decision, make a decision based on whatever the circumstances are the next time.
I think you'd continue it.
And get a motion to continue?
Bob Phoenix, motion to continue.
Dottie, second it.
All those, Dave? All those in favor to continue?
Bob Phoenix, aye.
Dottie, aye.
Motion continue. Uh. V twenty-three twelve four nine Boswell Ave. You don't have.
You don't have
Didn't receive, so he didn't mail the legal notices out in time. Um, and I guess it would be up to you whether you wanted to open the public hearing and not just not make a decision that he's not here either.
No.
So, or just open the public hearing at the next meeting. We have time on this one to open the public hearing.
I would suggest we open the public hearing when he's properly noticed, noticed, noticed everybody instead of starting the clock already. Everybody have a problem with that? No, I have not. Dottie, Bob?
No problem.
Problem.
Then we'll just go by that one. Um, possible decisions done. You got more? No, listen, that's like, that's excellent. Staff, scaring, staff updates?
Um, the only, the only staff updates that I had briefly discussed was, uh, Jackie wanted me to remind everybody that um, the the terms are coming up in February for reappointment and he's going online to pull up the the form so that she can get on the agenda setting to get everybody reappointed properly and also the training that's required.
Is that all this, are, are you coming up? You know, which ones?
I believe it's everybody. Okay, I, I, I have a very difficult time trying to follow.
Richard, I got a question. I took the training. You're telling me if I sign up again, I gotta take it again?
No, no, you only have to take it once every, I think it's once every four years or every two.
Oh, okay.
So if you, if you've taken all of the training, I think it's what, four, four and a half hours?
I got the certificate, so.
Right, so if you have the certificates, just make sure you send them to Jackie so that um, you know, she can, you know, keep track of that. And, you know, the thing about this, there's no, there's no no penalties right now for any municipal border commission or to the municipality if the members are not trained. Um, but the problem is we end up in a lawsuit and
Oh.
The problem, the, the, the problem that we, that we as the city faces, the first uh accusation is going to be that the commission member who was not trained should not have been acting on that because they weren't in compliance with the state statutes. Uh, so that's, that's kind of right now where it boils down to. I've been into a couple of different training seminars and meetings. I, I actually just took it last Saturday myself because I am not exempt by my own board in my town.
Wow.
Yeah.
Bob, are you, have you taken them all?
I have. I've got six hours in, actually. I've got a surplus.
Okay, you wanna lend me a few? Um, so, so I guess I'm the only one that's behind. I was gonna ask what we had to do if there were, is there something that we can do independently? Can you like log on and take the class without sitting through when they did it?
Some of them are Zoom and some of them are in person. So I'm not sure. I don't think there's any way where you log in and take a digital course.
Okay.
Sure, I'm not aware of any of them.
All right. I'll be honest, I mean, based on what I was seeing, I mean, I don't know why they can't do that. Those are recorded, there's, there's, there's
Take a test at the end.
There's no test. Um, so I don't know why they couldn't allow you to watch one of those recordings and that count other than somebody made up a rule for that. I think it's something we should look at just because all of my training at the fire department, we do that way now.
Right.
You know, my E M T certification.
Right.
All my state licenses, we're doing that way. And I think it would make it easier for the members like myself than to, to a lot of Monday evenings.
But I, I agree.
I mean, the, the only thing you would miss is the opportunity to ask a question if you had one. Um, there were ten minutes at the end typically, five to ten minutes at the end of asking questions. I can see volume of people that were on the Zoom meetings, most people didn't ask questions.
Right.
But there was, uh, there were some good questions asked.
Yeah, Mark, I would probably contact the, the town manager's office. Your level of certification and continuing education requirements uh far exceed anything that you would get of any use in these, in these training seminars. Um, you know, for what I used to do over the years, I had to sit through an hour and a half worth of plan review.
Right.
Um, you know, there should be credit to, credit given where credit is due.
That one was painful to me, Bob. I sat through that also.
I know, right?
I learned that in high school.
So I was at, I was at a meeting last Wednesday and the attorney giving the presentation was discussing this. And he did make the joke that the only people who are exempt from the training are licensed attorneys in the state of Connecticut. And his joke was that a divorce attorney is exempt, but the lawyers professionals who were all already sitting in that room and serving in their own towns are not exempt. Thought he was joking about it.
Well, it's something, I'll follow up because, uh, like I said, while my E M T, we do monthly training, my fire partial certification. I do online. I have to watch so many of these C E U's. Right, it's like I, there should be a file folder that you log on. Some of my medical training, you have to spend forty minutes and you gotta click the box so they know you're live and taking it. I, I think it's
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. All my training at work is online.
Right.
No, but I took all my, I, I took my class for the real estate online too, every two years.
Not all my training. There are some things, trains which you physically have to be present for, like, um, learning how to put on, on a harness.
Right.
But physically you have to put the harness on. So that training, there is a few of my training at work that is live, but they are, but those are, are, um, there's really that way. We out of, four out of the hundred training things I have to do, something like that. It's a phenomenal.
I watched a bunch of videos on CPR, but then I do actually have to press the W. Press the W, you know, so.
Yeah, no, like the, the All right, and just for the record, thank you guys for entertaining my rant on that building. I was the battalion in charge of the fire. And a- anytime you want to go look, you go from right next to the parking garage, down a flight of stairs, across two decks and then up and around the back. It's, it's a crazy catwalk to get to where they want to put two more apartments dumping out.
Get it.
It's, uh, sometimes wearing too many hats in this town gets me in trouble with an opinion. But it was all I could do to get hoses and men back there on a hot August day. And the thought of getting a couple more residents out did not impress me this evening.
No, I don't blame you. You know, uh, and be perfectly honest with you, I thought that the N F P A one oh, uh, one oh one change in two thousand one included, um, uh, included three or more units uh to be developed. Ha- uh, had to, um, had to be sprinklered. But it was my understanding that Florida actually passed a law outlawing that. But I still thought it was part of the, the, um, N F P A. I really did.
I, I think this building is gonna have to be sprinkled, but I didn't want to commit to that.
Oh, I'll find out on Thursday.
Yeah, um, maybe I can start a picket line or something. But anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate, um, all of your assistance with my uh, ranting and raving and sideways, uh, commentary, but.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, I second it, Dottie.
I
Good night, everybody.
Meeting adjourned twenty-four. Thank you, everybody.